Commissioners for Tuesday, April 5th, 2016. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Do you have one adjustment, Mr. Chairman? Under closed session, I'd like to add an item of attorney-client privilege, and that's General Statute Reference 143-318-11, subsection A, 3.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This opposed light sign, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one quick announcement? We had a couple of public hearings that went to the -- items that went to the Planning Board at their last meeting that were originally scheduled to be heard tonight, but they're going to be heard two weeks from tonight, just in case anybody is here for those.
The only public hearing that will be held tonight concerns consideration of changes made to the solid waste ordinance. We move on to appointments before the Board. Item six, to begin with, we'll have Amy Isley from -- Stop Child -- pardon?
I'm sorry, she's not here.
She's not here?
Yeah.
Okay. If you could come forward, please, and just announce your name for the record, and if you'll just tell us a little bit about Stop Child Abuse Now, SCAN Center, and the proclamation that's been requested.
My name's Tom Ra Roach, and I'm on the Board of Directors of SCAN of Iredell County. SCAN is a child abuse prevention nonprofit that works in Iredell County, works to support and coach, provide accountability and nurturing for parents who are trying to either get their children back through adjudication. It is open to families or other parents who need help increasing and improving their parenting skills, and it works to just really kind of coach and provide that support group and support network for parents who are working on getting their children back.
Well, thank you. The Board has already, in our pre-agenda session, approved a request for a proclamation, and I'd like to read that for the record. This is a proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month, Iredell County, North Carolina. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable asset, and whereas safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities are needed to foster healthy growth and development of all children, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both current and future quality of life of communities, and whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, the knowledge of parenting, and child development programs, and the concrete resources needed to cope with the stress and to nurture their children, ensure that all children grow to their full potential, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies are known to succeed when there are partnerships created by citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, health care providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and calls upon citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live, adopted this fifth day of April 2016.
Thank you.
If you'll come up. Our second item is a request to approve a proclamation recognizing the month of April as Public Health Month. And I believe we have Jane Murray. Jane is our Director of Public Health.
Thank you. On behalf of the staff of the Health Department, we want to thank you for your continued support, and county leaders and the Board of Health. We're very proud to serve the citizens of the county, whether it's in our environmental health programs, making sure the food you eat is safe, that we don't have raw sewage on the ground, and you can have fresh well water or our clinical services, and now from preparedness, we're concerned about Zika, so we really appreciate your continued support.
Thank you, Jane. I'd like to, as I mentioned before, we've approved the proclamation, and I'd like to read that for the record and for the public. Public Health Month 2016 proclamation. Whereas public health measures to control and eliminate infectious diseases, improve environmental sanitation, and promote healthy lifestyle practices have been the greatest cause of improved health status and increased life expectancy for North Carolina's residents, such that North Carolinians have an average life expectancy at birth of more than 78 years, and whereas public health plays a critical role in eliminating health inequities and preventing chronic diseases and injuries resulting in improved productivity and decreased health care costs for all North Carolinians, and whereas a continued focus on promoting public health programs that provide accessible, high-quality medical care, and that promote healthy lifestyles for women of childbearing years has resulted in a 17 percent decline in infant mortality since the year 2000, and whereas a continued focus on prevention has resulted in a 40 percent decline in age-adjusted heart disease death rates since 2000, a 45 percent decline in age-adjusted stroke deaths since 2000, and a 56 percent decline in birth rates for teens ages 15 to 19 since 2000, and whereas the state of North Carolina is committed to continued emphasis on prevention and public health and on helping North Carolina reach a better state of health through actions outlined in the Healthy North Carolina 2020 objectives, and whereas the Healthy North Carolina 2020 Health Objectives represent a 10-year plan to improve the health of all North Carolinians by working to promote access to preventive and needed health services, foster positive and supportive living and working conditions in our communities, and support individuals in developing the capacities and skills to achieve healthy living, and whereas communities, employers, hospitals, and health care providers, individuals and families, insurers, legislators, and policymakers, schools, and childcare facilities must work together to identify and develop innovative services and solutions to health problems facing the people of North Carolina. Now therefore, we, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Public Health Month in Iredell County, North Carolina, and command its observance to all citizens this fifth day of April 2016.
Thank you, Jane. You are the board.
Mr. Chairman, I may share, I've been doing some reading lately, and it's talking about the mundane science of economics, but it talked about productivity and how the increase in lifespan and the health of people had contributed to increase productivity. And I'll just share a couple with you, things that I read, and they're related to public health, and Ms. Murray may find this interesting. I'll throw it out there, you believe you want to. The authors of this book, great deal of study went, they estimated that approximately half the people ever lived on Earth are alive today. And they said that for a number of reasons. At the time of Christ, the infant mortality rate was over 50 percent. As late as the Westward movement in this country, the average life expectancy of a woman was 33 years. Average life expectancy of a man was 31 years. Even in the early part of the 20th century, life expectancy, it was rare to find anybody who lived to be 60 years old. They died from things such as malnourishment, typhoid. Diseases have been long since eradicated in this country that we take for granted were blessings to those people when cures and methods of prevention came. So that's just one thing that's added to our productivity is the longevity of life and the number of years that we stay healthy, and because we stay healthier longer, we have an opportunity to learn for a long period of time, which has done a great deal to increase the economic productivity of our country. Again, the most amazing statistics I've read in that book so far is anthropologists believe that half of the people who ever lived on Earth are alive today. It's difficult to imagine, but if over half of them die at birth, I guess that could be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you, Jane, for your entire staff that works in areas that people don't realize that public health is constantly monitoring, particularly our water and sewer and just basic things that everyone takes for granted, y'all are on top of, and we appreciate it. Our third item is a request from the Director of the 911 Emergency Communication Center, and this is a request for a proclamation declaring April 2016 as the National 911 Education Month. And our new Ecom Director is Candy Strzynski, and she's here, and if you'd please just share a little bit.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you. The second week of April each year is dedicated to the men and women who answer 911 phone calls, public safety calls for Iredell County. In the last year, we answered over 300,000 calls, non-emergency and emergency calls. They not only answer the calls, they also dispatch lifesaving EMS, fire, law enforcement to the citizens of Iredell County. I would like to ask your support for the 28 telecommunicators that are here in Iredell County who do this job every day in recognizing April 10th through the 16th as National Telecomunicator Week, and April is 911 Education Month.
Thank you, Candy. The Board likewise approved this proclamation at our pre-agenda meeting, and I would like to read from it. Whereas 911 is nationally recognized as the number to call in an emergency to receive immediate help from police, fire, emergency medical services, or other appropriate emergency entities, and whereas 911 was designated by Congress as the national emergency call number under the Wireless Communications and Public Safety Act of 1999, and whereas the Enhanced 911 Act of 2004 established Enhanced 911 as a high national priority as part of our nation's homeland security and public safety, and whereas people of all ages use 911, and it is critical to educate the public of all ages on the proper use of 911, and whereas a growing segment of the population, including the deaf, hard-of-hearing, deaf-blind, and individuals with speech disabilities, increasingly communicate with non-traditional text, video, and instant messaging communication services, and anticipate that these services will be able to connect directly to 911, and whereas thousands of 911 calls are made every year by children properly trained on the use of 911, resulting in lives saved, which underscores the critical importance of training children early in life about 911, and whereas there is widespread misuse of the 911 system, including prank and non-emergency calls, which can result in costly and inefficient use of 911 and emergency response resources. Now therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2016 as National 911 Education Month. I call upon all government officials, parents, teachers, school administrators, caregivers, business leaders, nonprofit organizations, and the people of Iredell County to observe this month with training events and activities to educate the public on 911 and its services this fifth day of April 2016. Any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to kind of just take a moment or two. A lot of times whenever people talk about county employees, or they're not sure what people do, or question the value, I often use the telecommunicators as a good example of sometimes the quite extraordinary things that some of our county employees do. I mean typically, the 911 operator gets a phone call from who? From somebody, if it's a medical emergency, typically they're getting a phone call from a family member of somebody who's getting ready to have or is having one of the worst days of their life. And imagine, okay, so you're talking to somebody who's highly emotional, very stressed, and they are not trained in these situations. Simply trying to find out where they are, think about how many times you've traveled on a long road, especially if it's at night. You may know what road you're on, but how do you tell them where you are? The road can be eight miles long. How many times are you on the interstate, and you really don't know which exits are you between? I know I'm near exit 36. Which side are you on? Just to figure out where the person is sometimes can be quite difficult, considering that most people get their phone calls from cell phones as opposed to from a home phone that's got a 911 identifier on it. The telecommunicator has to decide very quickly what vehicles to dispatch. I mean, some of the first decisions made in these critical situations are being made by that dispatcher that's trying to figure out how to get the help there and where they're going to get it from. While they're waiting for help to get there, it's that 911 operator that's guiding that person, what do you do next? Okay? And that person isn't trained, but they're guiding them on what to do next. And what's really just incredible, when you think about it, is they're doing all of this without seeing a thing. Every piece of information they get, they're getting from somebody who's very upset on the other end of the phone, and if you ever asked my mom directions somewhere, you can imagine how difficult it is to get accurate information over the phone with somebody who's not upset. So I just, of course, we endorse the application, but I just want to really bring out those points, because our telecommunicators, they do more than answer the phone and just send the police or send the ambulance. They really have a tremendous responsibility, and they do a very difficult job, and they do it well, and we thank them for their service. Thank you very much.
And we do want to welcome Candy as our new Director of Emergency Communications. We are preparing to embark on an investment in our public safety services to include our communication capabilities, not only in terms of the communication facility itself, but also in terms of the radios that are used by our first responders and our other agencies out there that are serving the public 24/7. And so, you know, our county has almost doubled in size since the last time the Emergency Communication Center was established. So they are working with other departments within the county to really produce a state-of-the-art, cutting-edge, yet prudent and efficient and effective center to be able to serve the citizens of this county. I will mention that I stopped by one evening to check in and see some of the Ecom folks at their stations, and as I left, I broke the taboo. I said, "Have a quiet evening." They said, "Oh, no, never say quiet." You know, don't say that. So just remember that if you ever stop by.
A few times I've been in there, none of them have been available to talk.
And finally, we've had a couple of monthly proclamations, one week, and now we're down to one day. The request from the Stateful Regional Development to adopt a proclamation declaring April 14th as Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County. So I'm not sure if John Merrick will be representing Stateful Regional Development.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. While Stateful Regional Development took the lead on this request, we also want to recognize our other partners from Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development. We have Chris Younger and Jessica Stewart. Of course, Mike Smith from Stateful Regional Development, and Carol Johnson from Mitchell Community College are also here with me tonight. One of the key things that we as an economic development organization do to help recruit businesses to the area is to ensure a supply of skilled labor for those businesses, and particularly manufacturing, advanced manufacturing. And to that end, for the last several years, we have worked with our partners at Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development, Mitchell Community College, and Iredell Stateful Schools and Mooresville Graded Schools to hold an Advanced Manufacturing Day at Mitchell Community College. We invite about 100, or excuse me, about 200 self-identified students who have an interest in advanced manufacturing to come and tour the campus, talk to some of our Iredell County companies who offer jobs in advanced manufacturing, as well as to the staff at Mitchell about the types of programming that they need to go through to get those extremely good-paying jobs. So this year, we would like to have April 14th as Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County.
Thank you, John. I'd like to read the proclamation which we adopted at our pre-agenda meeting, declaring April 14th, 2016, as Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County, North Carolina. Whereas a group of public and private organizations have recognized April 14th, 2016, as Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County to highlight the importance of advanced manufacturing in our national and local economy, and to draw attention to the many rewarding, high-skill advanced manufacturing jobs. And whereas Advanced Manufacturing Day presents many opportunities to showcase Iredell County's economy and our highly skilled workforce, and whereas North Carolina ranks first among southeastern states for manufacturing jobs, and is home to 10,328 manufacturing establishments employing 448,623 workers, and whereas made-in-Iredell County products are known for quality, are recognized worldwide, and are important to both our state and national economy, and whereas manufacturing remains North Carolina's largest industry sector, comprising slightly more than $88 billion, roughly 20 percent of our gross domestic product, and whereas studies show that for every $1 spent in manufacturing, a dollar and 66 cents is generated for North Carolina's economy, and whereas Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, Stateful Regional Development, Mitchell Community College, Iredell Stateful Schools, and Mooresville Graded Schools are committed to producing highly skilled, advanced manufacturing workers now and in the future to meet employers' needs, and whereas North Carolina Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, also known as STEM initiatives, are the foundation of an education leading to a career in manufacturing, and whereas Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County is designed to raise awareness about careers in manufacturing and the importance of manufacturing to our economic prosperity. Now therefore, we, Iredell County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 14th, 2016, Advanced Manufacturing Day in Iredell County, and commend its observance to all citizens, adopted this fifth day of April 2016. Any comments? I'd just say that having attended last year's convocation at Mitchell College at the Continuing Education Center, it was very impressive to see the number of young high school students that were interested in hearing more about advanced manufacturing and understanding that, you know, the key to getting a $20-an-hour job runs through the programs that are connecting our school systems with Mitchell and our businesses, and being able to provide the human capital necessary to attract businesses to Iredell County. That is the most critical aspect of business recruitment today, is having the workforce that is educated and capable of having a lifelong learning attitude, and, you know, Iredell County, based on the efforts of our education systems and of our businesses in supporting the institutions and linking up with students and providing them a glimpse of the kinds of careers that are available, you know, all of that activity is what keeps our tax rate low. To pay for services, you've got to have tax revenues, and the tax rate times the tax base is going to produce those revenues. And when we have advanced manufacturers come to Iredell County and invest, then that is a net gain to us and our economy, and we're able to pay for the services that our citizens desire, and indeed that we are mandated to provide in many instances. So it is this kind of effort that is critical, and I would commend everyone that has a child in school to look at these programs and to get out and see what advanced manufacturing is all about, because it is light years away from any kind of stereotypes of, you know, manufacturing jobs that existed 25 years ago. And so it is the future for our future generations in this county. So, Mr. Merrick, thank you for your efforts, and I want to thank all the other representatives from the South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, as well as Mitchell Community College, with Carol Johnson. You gonna make, somebody gonna make the speech?
No, I'll give the speech.
Gonna make it. That'll be good. The next item on the agenda was a request from Iredell Stateful Schools to reconvene the School Facilities Task Force. We provided them direction at the, to Dr. Miller earlier in the pre-agenda meeting to move forward to begin that coordination effort. We'll now move on to item seven, a public hearing for the consideration of changes made to the solid waste ordinance. And that will be memo number six. Mr. Lambert? And that will be memo number six with Mr. Lambert. This matter was announced two weeks ago, and the changes to the ordinance have been made available, I believe, on the website, but also at, they've been posted as well. So, Slammer, if you could summarize.
That is correct. They were posted on the website, and also we had a copy available at our office, and to my knowledge, no one actually came in to take a look. It's pretty dry reading usually when you start to have. Our ordinances were basically written in the late 80s and early 90s. They were almost, appeared to be written in three separate articles, and what we tried to do was take and combine those more or less into a more comprehensive document. We moved all, we had three sets of definitions. We moved all those to one place at the very beginning of the article. We added some definitions that reflect more recent developments in waste management, recycling, those type of things, tried to make a little more clarity to what actually constitutes a violation and address our ability to enforce or remediate those violations.
We have had the opportunity at our pre-agendas and between, during the last two weeks, to review the changes and direct questions to Mr. Lambert. Any Commissioners have any comments or questions at this time?
Just say that I thought we asked a lot of questions, and Mr. Lambert provided a lot of answers, and a lot of the information that he gave us, I thought, showed that a lot of research had been done to make sure that we were, that we were in lockstep with our compliance obligations with the state of North Carolina as well. So he's to be commended for doing that, which was no small task on a subject that is amazingly complicated for, it may be simplistic on the surface, but it's actually, you know, how we get rid of stuff is actually quite complicated.
Mr. Chairman, I, to some degree, I was responsible for all the hard work of Mr. Lambert, because I got a number of calls and visited a number of places where folks wasn't taking care of their trash, but the existing ordinance, we really couldn't address it. And I want to congratulate Mr. Lambert. I believe he has hit the right balance between not being overly intrusive and meddlesome in people's life, but giving his staff the opportunity to enforce an ordinance to protect the well-being and the quality of life of the neighbors should they feel a little careless about how they dispose of things. So I thank you for your hard work, Mr. Lambert.
You're welcome. I appreciate your comments.
Any other comments? You know, I'll just say, Mr. Lambert, that, you know, as we have a more complex society, we've moved away from a lot of the basis of our legal jurisprudence, which is common law. And common law was unwritten, and it was commonly known. As society is, and everyday living's gotten more complex, we've moved as a country more into code-based law, where everything's written down. But you can't get away from the common law reason. If you do, you are just, you know, enforcing every jot and tittle of something that's been written down that may not apply directly to situations, because anytime you have human beings, you're going to have unanticipated situations that develop. And I just want to thank you and your staff for, even though, you know, you are very much focused on enforcing a law that is based on a code, that you apply it with common sense and that you take into effect human factors and things that don't quite fit within the four corners of sometimes a definition, but which are done in a way that are flexible in their approach. So I thank you. At this time, open the public hearing. There is no one, and I'm aware of, that has signed up to be heard on this matter. I will canvass the audience that's here. If you would like to be heard on the update of the solid waste ordinance, if you'd please so indicate. I am not, we're not being rushed. Okay, so I will, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move we adopt this, this new, excuse me, allergies, we adopt this solid waste ordinance as Mr. Lambert has presented to us this evening.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Now move on to administrative matters that were appropriate for our consent agenda, and Mr. Smith, if you would please summarize those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a request from Facility Services for approval to negotiate and execute a contract with Edifice General Contractors and ADW Architects for the proposed public safety facility. A request from the Public Library for approval of Budget Amendment Number 30 to recognize $7,840 in increased state aid for public libraries. A request from the Public Library for approval of, to request E-rate discounts in the amount of $14,908. A request from DSS for approval to apply for a community response program grant for up to $100,000. A request from Parks and Recreation for input on a comprehensive recreation master plan addendum. A request from ECOM for approval of a memorandum of understanding with Wilkes County to use Iredal County as their E-911 backup, and a request for approval of the March 15, 2016 minutes.
Are there any further comments or questions regarding the matters for the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined by Mr. Smith?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item nine, announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have one, one announcement, actually, two announcements, for the Icare Board of Directors. So if there's anyone who desires to volunteer, there's a process by which you can go on the website and then submit an application to the clerk of the commission, and we will announce the filling of those vacancies two weeks hence. We'll be on to item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. The first appointment is to the Centralina Economic Development Commission. There's one appointment, Bonnie Holbrook.
Mr. Chairman, actually, that's Beth Jones.
Is it Beth?
Yeah.
Oh, I got the wrong one. Okay, Beth Jones to the Centralina Economic Development Commission. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Beth Jones to fill this appointment, please.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And finally, on the Nursing Home Advisory Board, one appointment, Bonnie Holbrook has volunteered. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll nominate Bonnie Holbrook.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. Any of the Commissioners have anything to raise? There's no new business. Mr. Smith, if you'll please present the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing too in-depth tonight. Couple of announcements. One is the grand opening and the ribbon-cutting for the Big Leaf Slopes Park that is out near the landfill. It's going to be held on April 23rd from 10:00 to 2:00, and the address is 341 Twin Oaks Road. They're going to have some speakers. This park has been basically done completely by volunteers, other than some work done by our facility staff on the parking lot. So hopefully, this will be a success. The second, and I'm kind of stealing Candy's thunder, on April 13th at 3:00 at the, at the EOC at ECOM, will be an event basically to commemorate, or well, to celebrate National Telecommunicator Week. They're going to be just bringing some folks together, and you are invited to attend. And the final thing I have is just a reminder, we're going to be submitting the budget to you on May 3rd. I'll be giving the budget message, and we will have the budget books available after that first May meeting. On the 9th, we will have our first budget work session, and that's going to be in the South Wing Conference Room from 12:00 to 5:00, and then on the 12th, we'll have the same thing, South Wing, from 12:00 to 5:00. Public hearing is scheduled for June 7th. And those are just some reminders. Thank you.
That was the 9th and the 12th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this time, we'll be moving into a closed session to consider matters for economic development related to General Statute 143-318.11A4, as well as property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5, and attorney-client related to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3.
I'm sure it is.
It's supposed to get down to thirty-six? Thirty-two?
Thirty-two?
That's what I said the other night.
Do you know that I left and loaded my register? And when I got there, it was still here.
They don't matter, you tell me. You do that and I'll do this.
We will resume with the open session and have one item for economic development.
Actually, I think we got two, Don. Yeah, I would offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, to call for a public hearing on April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven P. M., in regard to an economic development incentive of one hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars over a five-year period for Project Dorado, based on a six million dollar investment in Ardell County.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And we have another matter as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we call for a public hearing on April nineteenth at the seven P. M. meeting regarding an economic incentive, economic development incentive of sixty-one thousand two hundred dollars over a five-year period for Project MAG, based on a three-point-one million dollar investment in our community.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the commission? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Hi, gentlemen.